Thank you Paula. This morning, we will have two presenters. The first presenter is going to be Dr. Mark Vermillion. Dr. Mark is the professor and department chair workforce leadership and applied learning degree at Wichita State University. He focuses on partnership building with a variety of public, private, and community organizations. He receives his PhD in psychology from Oklahoma State University focusing on perceptions of campus crime. Our other presenter is Dr. Mike Ross. He is the assistant professor and coordinator of the e-leadership program at Wichita State University. He teaches and conducts research and works with a variety of organizations regarding leadership best practices. And he has his education degree in leadership and higher education from Baker University. So those will be our two presenters today. I do also want to give a big appreciation and a big shout out to RSM, who is our sponsor for this session. We wouldn't have been able to do that without them, so we appreciate their support, not only for this session, but also for Kansas GFOA as well.
Thank you again. We are going to get started. This pre-recorded video and information session was, is it going to be about a 34-minute video? And then when we come back, we're going to have the opportunity to discuss some of the key areas that were discussed within the video. So sit back and enjoy. There's lots of great information included in this training related to leadership lessons and leading our world through crisis.
Thank you for tuning in today for our latest leadership lesson. This one will be entitled, "Leading Our New World Through Crisis." My name is Mark Vermillion, and I'm the chair and director for the workforce leadership program here at Wichita State University. And we're joined with Dr. Mike Ross, who is assistant professor in all things leadership and the coordinator of our e-leadership program. We appreciate you taking the time. And if you have any questions at the end of this presentation or just moving forward, feel free to connect with us. And our contact information will be located on the last slide of this presentation.
So anytime that you are asked to talk on something, for me, the easiest way to go about it is to find a quote on it. And so anytime that we get asked to speak on leadership on a particular aspect of that, I go out and try to find a quote on it. And this is one of the ones that I found, and it comes from Brian Cornell, who is the CEO at Target. Now, I thought that there were three really, really interesting things about this particular quote. Number one, Cornell was named the top CEO in the country last year by CNN. Now, you can argue how much government values CNN and their rankings at this point, but it's really hard to argue whether or not you are getting praise from a major news outlet. And that news outlet basically tabbing a retail giant CEO as their top executive of the year. So it's something to pay attention to. The second thing that I think is really interesting about this is that Cornell took over in 2014. He knows a thing or two about leading through a crisis. If you remember, Target's data breach happened in 2013. So he actually received the role of CEO because of something that had happened previously to his time. So always try to look out for leaders who may already have some knowledge about what it is that you are experiencing or about to go through. And then the third thing is if you aren't really sure about your leadership through all of this, through Corona, through the amount of political division that we have right now, through the amount of social unrest, folks join the club. We are literally all in this together. And one of our best CEOs, you can see right there on the screen, says that there's no playbook for this. We are all trying to manage through this together. So what we say today are really just suggestions to try to help you navigate this. It's not going to solve every problem for you. It is not going to balance a budget. It is not going to calm your constituents. It is just hopefully for you, a moment to pause. And I'm sure that that's what this entire conference has been for all of you, is just a moment to gather your thoughts, to not be in a situation where you are necessarily on the job and having to think and make decisions and everything else that goes along with it. Just a chance to reflect. And it might actually be the first time since all of this began, since the pandemic began, that you all have a chance to just kind of reflect about what's happened and set up a little bit of a plan for how to lead through what's to come. So we've got four key aspects here that we would like to try to get across over the next few minutes. And sometimes, especially us in education, I think we can educate better by telling people what not to do as opposed to telling them, well, why? Well, instead of educating you on what we should do, maybe we need to frame it in what not to do. So, you know, throughout this entire pandemic, we've had the situation where you should not have more than 10 people in a room. You should not be traveling. You should not be going more than 10 or 15 minutes without washing your hands. So, you know, we'll just stay in that same frame of mind. So we're going to frame our discussion around four things that we don't want to do as leaders. We don't want to panic. We don't want to assume. We don't want to micro. And last but not least, we don't want to break.
Don't panic. Be open and honest, project intelligence and a sense of calm. Calming the fight for flight tendencies. It sounds so easy to do, but I'm going to take a moment just to talk a little bit about that. David Michaels was writing for Forbes Magazine and really examined Italy during the recent COVID-19 pandemic. And one of his conclusions is that in times of heightened anxiety and stress, we must change the way we lead. That's an interesting idea, and I want to put a pin in that, hold on to it, because that's going to dovetail nicely with some of the other things that we talked about here in just a few minutes. Daniel Quill, many of you probably read many of his different books, discussed what really makes a strong organizational culture. And he noted that fear oftentimes is the biggest detriment to people being able to move forward in a unified way. So as leaders, we need to create a sense of safety and security. But how do we do that? It's very easy to say that in a book, but the big question is, how do we connect that with our day-to-day life? The answer is fairly simple, but difficult at times to execute. To create safety, you need to be honest. Limiting information does not necessarily protect people and does not limit or inhibit panic. We can't ignore the elephant in the room. I see it, you see it, and we're both going to ignore it. That really doesn't make any sense, and it creates distrust and insults the emotional intelligence of other people. What we do is we say, there's an elephant. We say it's a scary elephant. And when we do that, we trust that people are going to respond in an intelligent way. The quickest way to calm fear is to call it out. Fear has a biological sense to who we are. Fear is real, and it activates our instincts within our brains, such as whether you want to call it fight or flight, whether you want to call it survive and thrive, it doesn't necessarily matter. In the world of business, workers focusing on layoffs constantly can really trigger a response of fear through the exact same biological brain-based challenge. And what this really does is it, it shows that people dwelling on circumstances can actually inhibit what they're doing in that moment. So some of the things that you are going to be doing as leaders, irrespective of your position within the organization, we're all leaders. And so some of the things that you all can do to inspire calm and help people to not panic. Number one, reduce the volume of threats. Sounds pretty simple, doesn't it? You do this by simply helping employees to understand and know what is immediately impactful. Give them the information, give them the information in short, specific, contextual ways. The virus, for example, is a real health threat. So leaders can take small steps to ease fear, such as showing how remote working or how employee health insurance can support all people during this time. Number two, understand cognitive dissonance. So the first part of that is what is cognitive dissonance? Well, it's an idea that comes from psychology, and it's simply not knowing what is going on and what to expect. And that fear, that anxiety, that's cognitive dissonance. And what leaders can do is be transparent. Or as we said earlier, just call it out. Trust people with the truth. Finally, and arguably maybe the most difficult, project calm and openness. Provide options for people to vent or express their fears and/or ideas. You're trying to be receptive to whatever ideas or fears that they have. And if you don't panic, then there's a greater chance that they will not panic. Try as best you can to role model stability.
The second thing is, don't assume. We as leaders can't assume that our leadership is making a definitive impact in one direction or another on those that we lead. And I think there are three key assumptions that we need to make sure that we don't get caught in making in ourselves. The first one, don't assume that information creates informness. Don't assume information creates informness. We live in a highly, highly connected world, and it never shuts off. So our key constituents, our employees, our residents, our family, all of our constituents have all kinds of different direct sources to information. Spoiler alert, they're not all good sources of information. So it's easy to say, well, they'll watch the news, or they'll read the newspaper, or it was in the newsletter. If I had a dollar for every time I heard that one. In a crisis, we can't assume that people are going to do any of those things. So what's our charge as leaders? Our charge is to provide good information. In a crisis, we need to focus our energy on leading through the crisis and not necessarily debating on, or even worse, making assumptions about what the facts truly are. Don't assume that information creates informness. Number two, don't assume they understood. We need to create and we need to share. We need to disseminate information as much as we possibly can. These implications are invaluable. However, we can't always assume that folks have understood the message. Our response needs to be three things. The first thing it needs to be is prompt. It's not a race to be first, but you do want to be early and regular in response. Did you notice how we went to daily briefings at the beginning of the pandemic? We need that information, and it needs to be prompt. Second thing, the information needs to be clear. Long messages from lawyers and doctors are going to not be understood very well. It's just not going to happen. Put yourself in your constituents' shoes, because after all, you're a citizen too. Try to reduce the amount of ambiguity that comes with the message if possible. Okay? We just need our message to be prompt. We just need it to be clear. And last, we need it to be balanced. Yes, we need to bring the reasoning behind things so that people can understand deeper. And there's probably going to be some data. Okay? However, we also need to be able to connect to their emotions as well. In other words, we need to lead with the why before we tell them what to do. Because when you tell someone what to do, especially in a crisis, our tendency is to revert back to being a four-year-old. Well, why? Well, because it's what's best. Well, because why? We can't get caught in just telling people what to do. We've got to lead with the why to connect to their emotions. That emotional connection is what is going to eventually lead their brain to action. The why communicates empathy. Like we learned just a few minutes ago from Mark, empathy allows us to disarm some of this anxiety. We're all in it together. The third thing that I think we can't get caught assuming here is that we can't get caught assuming that nothing has changed regarding work. Have you actually communicated with folks on what their needs are? No, it could be a thing where they need some things from their office. We experienced that at the beginning of the pandemic. I needed some things from my office to be able to work from home. So we had to set up a schedule for all of us to be able to come in and spend a couple of hours in the office gathering things so that we could take it home. And we needed to do it in a manner where we avoided each other. Your folks may need some training. We can't assume that everyone is going to know how to get on a Zoom call. We can't even assume that people are going to know how to use personal protective equipment. I remember towards the beginning of this pandemic, I saw a story on the news, and it was that folks were not using gloves correctly. They were putting on a pair of gloves and then using them for like four or five days. And I turned to my wife, who's a medical social worker at the VA here in Wichita, and I said, really? This is, this is a problem? Like, people don't understand cross-contamination of gloves? And she was like, yep, absolutely. You can't just throw a box of gloves in front of someone and expect them to know how to use it. Okay? Do your constituents know how to use Zoom for a meeting? All right? Maybe they need a little bit of training on how to transmit documents digitally between folks without being in person and having an imprinted copy, whatever it is. The higher level of importance, the higher the level of training. So we may need some training. We may need a pep talk from time to time. All right? We have to be weary of social isolation here. Loneliness is the most common complaint about remote work. Loneliness, all right? And then what about our needs for working from home? Have we thought about how to coach people in providing a dedicated space? Are we looking into ways that we can help with childcare? Whatever it is, we can't assume that nothing has changed in this eight-to-five world because it has.
Number three, don't micro. Sometimes too much attention to detail can be counterproductive. What do we mean by don't micro? Well, don't micro is really just an all-income scene catchphrase. It could include things like, don't micromanage people. Don't micromanage situations. Don't focus on the micro. Don't be myopic. Don't be so laser-focused that you can't see the forest because of the trees. Crisis events usually have a multiple responses. And these responses can be technical, or they can be what we call socio-emotional or people-centric. And for us, the leadership lesson here is kind of related to what Pritchard was talking about when he said, don't let nearsightedness impact your leadership. And basically, the argument goes like this. Good or effective leadership is both part science and part art. The science part involves duties, responsibilities, deadlines, policies, protocols, et cetera. These are the things that get the lion's share of our attention, especially during a crisis, regardless of what that crisis is. But this is the technical response to the crisis. Okay? The art component of leadership involves communication, delegation, and a focus on building, for example, confidence within your employees. This is the people-centered response to the crisis. So in order to not micromanage people or situations, you should, number one, provide clear communication of all the relevant information in order to decrease panic amongst folks. And then number two, do it in a way so that people really understand all aspects of the situation. You can increase confidence in the group by delegating some tasks and trusting, that's the key word, trusting, that people will complete whatever needs to be completed. And all sounds well and good, but how do you focus on the big picture and not get distracted by specific technical aspects of leading during a crisis? McNulty and Marcus were writing for the Harvard Business Review, and they talk about meta-leadership, which is, you know, if you've looked at a lot of the leadership literature, it's very jargon-y, and everyone has a catchphrase or a buzzword, whatever it is. Well, to me, meta-leadership is really about playing chess and not checkers. You lead for the long view, yes. But you cannot just simply manage the crisis in the short term. Okay? So think of it this way. We have a couple of different points here. Managing the crisis today involves immediate choices. Okay? It's going to involve allocating resources, trainings, those types of things. This could be for many of us, the Band-Aid, if you will, if we had to work remotely or if we're dealing with employees that are struggling through this crisis. This is all very important, but involves yesterday, the past six months, the past nine months, today, maybe a little bit of tomorrow. This is a technical response to this particular, this specific crisis. To avoid being myopic and reactionary, you try to manage the crisis today, but you try to keep another eye on how to lead in a month from now, or six months from now, or a year. Why are we thinking so far into the future? Well, it's simply because this crisis, or any other crisis, might actually change forever how we do work or how we engage with others within our organization. Number two, we want to avoid the thrill of managing a crisis and making it about you and your leadership. It's very intoxicating to be in charge and to be the source of information and answers for everyone. But you need to recognize that more rules, more regulations, and a heavy hand of leadership will probably not help people adapt to the current crisis or to the next inevitable crisis ahead, because the focus really has been on all of this technical problem solving. You're not connecting with people, you're not trusting people, and you're not recognizing that the larger issue of whatever this crisis is that we're talking about, it's going to impact people, and the way that you solve it is probably going to be through collaboration. You're missing the root core, that root core value of collaboration, which is how you're going to be able to address all crises moving forward. The specific aspects of each crisis are probably going to be unique to that particular crisis. But the way that you can prepare your organization and approach all crises in the future, that process can be fairly universal. As I said before, you can't see the forest because of the trees. And that's sometimes when we become so ultra-focused on things, that can be difficult because you're not seeing the larger picture. So I want to take just a brief example of looking at an understanding of health in the workplace. All right? So let's sort of contextualize it to a city or county administrative situation that many of you are probably all familiar with. Health and safety are important values. We know this, but how is health being defined? Right? So one example of defining health in the public administration point of view is through material safety data sheets, those MSDSs. Those are the things that address the OSHA regulations in maintenance shops or other organizational units. And they tell the individual or the reader what to do in certain instances and how to ultimately handle that negative situation. And they tend to address technocratic problems, such as someone was injured, hazardous chemicals were spilled. These MSDSs tell you how to respond to that situation. We know that these MSDSs are an important part of how we're going to define health and safety in the organization. However, meta-leadership, which is trying to take that much more broad-based view, doesn't focus on just one aspect of health. Here's just an example. 1948, we're coming out of World War II. World Health Organization, WHO, we've heard a lot about them recently over the past many moons. They defined health as not merely the absence of disease or infirmity. What this means is that health has taken on a multifaceted or holistic view for us. You have mental health, physical health, intellectual, spiritual, emotional, and occupational health. When we're dealing with something like COVID-19 or another health-based crisis, you aren't simply responding to the physical health crisis aspect, although that's terribly important. But we need to focus and we need to focus on and understand the complex and nuanced understanding of health. And as Mike was just saying, if isolation is one of the most self-reported things in difficult situations arising from working remotely or working at home, then now what we have is an additional aspect of trying to connect with your labor force in this distanced or remote workforce. The other thing to keep in mind is that while you're not necessarily focused, you're trying to broaden the understanding of what a leader can do in reference to health, that also means taking care of yourself as a leader. As a leader, your job is not just to help others, but it's also to realize that you, at times, need to have aspects of maybe spiritual health or mental health or emotional wellness that you need to dress as well.
So how do we do this? You know, when all of this started back in March, and here we are, we find ourselves in October now. But when all of this started, there was a lot of talk about physical health, things like protective equipment, fever, ventilator. You know, all of this aspect of the physical wellness when we first started. Here we are seven months later, and the new problems, if you will, that are coming up on a daily basis are worry, anxiety, and stability. So when we're in crisis, our mental state is already challenged, and it's very, very easy for us to exaggerate the worry, the anxiety, the doubt. A public leadership firm found that 58% of employees could not figure out how to keep their attention on work when they were working at home. That's, that's a huge number. That's more than half. More than half of us can't figure out exactly how to navigate this element of working from home. And as our mind begins to wander, how long am I going to be doing this? We can get trapped into this cycle of negative and obsessive thinking, and that creates even more fear and helplessness. It's a concept that we call catastrophic thinking. You know, the numbers are up again. What does this mean? What's going to happen? How are we going to come up with the budget if we can't keep things open? You know, how are we going to be able to move forward? You can really get yourself into a cycle of just talking yourself into a lot of negativity, which has a huge impact on mental, emotional, physical wellness, all of those dimensions that we've mentioned before. So there is a Buddhist parable that is a discussion between the old Buddhist and a young man who's calm and is having a conversation with the Buddhist. And the old Buddhist says, you know, if you were to be hit by an arrow, would it be painful? Of course, the young man's like, yeah, it would hurt. It would hurt a lot. And then the Buddhist said, if you were then to be hit by a second arrow, does the second arrow hurt worse than the first? In life, we don't necessarily control the first arrow and the pain that it causes. But the second arrow in this parable is our response to the first. It's our response to the pain. It's our response to the struggle. It's our response to, you know, how are we going to move forward? And the great thing about this is with the second arrow comes an element of control, because we have the possibility of choice. We get to choose how we respond. Now, I don't know exactly what it is that everyone is dealing with these days, because in the beginning, it was all coronavirus. And then we've had this period of massive political division. We've had a period of incredible social unrest. So it could be all of the above at this point. But those are the first arrows. Our second arrow is our choice. How do we respond emotionally and psychologically in a manner that allows us not to break? So how do we do this? How do we control the second arrow so that it doesn't hurt worse? Well, I'm going to put you through a little bit of imagery here with a photo. And if I were to ask you, what do you see in this photo? Some of you would say a tornado. You'd be perfectly correct. Others of you would say that you have residents in your community that see this as an excuse to break out a 12-pack of beer in a lawn chair. You would also probably be correct to some extent. But obviously, the majority of us are going to see there's a problem here. And it could be a tornado, or it could be coronavirus, or it could be the fact that you're going to have to Or it could be the fact that you're going to have to lay off half your workforce. It doesn't matter. It's there. That's the first arrow. So what if we were able to change how the second arrow impacted us? How do we do that? We shift our focus. This is the same image except it's just a little cut out of the bottom right-hand side. So you're like, well, I don't understand. What are we, what are we doing here? Well, we're not ignoring that the storm exists. Look, whether it's a tornado or it's coronavirus or whatever, it's going to do its damage. It's going to do its will and there is nothing that we personally can do to stop it. But what we can do is we can take control of the second arrow. We can shift our focus. If you've ever heard anything about the power of perspective, it gives us the ability to eliminate negative thinking. So how do we do this? How do we change our perspective? How do we take all of the anxiety and the negativity and all of this and into change so that we see this second image as opposed to necessarily being anxious and worried and fearful about the first? Well, the first thing you can do is write down what you're thinking, write down what you're feeling. This is basically like taking your brain to the gym to work out. You know, we all go to the gym to work out and walk or run or train or whatever it is. This is the way that we do it for our brain. When we do this, now all of a sudden we're in control of that second arrow. The second thing is to make a list. I have heard a ton uh from our people in education, K through 12, city administration, county administration, state administration. There is a huge fear and what is the fear? Fear of the unknown. Okay, well, fear of the unknown is something that we can't control. So remind yourself about the things that you do control. Make a list. It could be a mental list. It could be a written list. But what can you control? You can control showing up to work every day and giving your best. You can control how much time you're spending on screens. And by screens, I'm including television screens in this. All right? Yeah. It's tough to know that we need to probably kind of pry ourselves away from that a little bit. But we control our, our diet. We control how much sleep we can get. We control these things. Then remind yourself of what you don't control. Look, you don't control other people's attitudes. You don't control their insecurities. You don't control their behaviors. Remember, they are in response mode, just like us. Everyone is experiencing this in a variety of different ways. How you experience it through your work may be completely different than how a citizen is experiencing it from the standpoint of I am just in survival mode. Take command of what you can control. And then the rest of it? Well, if you've got young children or grandchildren, you know where I'm going with this because of the Disney classic. Let it go, man. Let everything else go. Because their baggage, the things that you can't control, it's not your burden. Their baggage is not your burden. The last thing that I think we can do here. Just write for a couple of minutes. I make all of my classes write for two minutes at the end of class, just two minutes, that's it. It's amazing how they all will write for more than two minutes when they do this, but all I require is just two minutes. Just take two minutes and write down what you're grateful for. Now, in leadership circles, you may call this a gratitude journal and I'm fine with that, but it takes us out of the mindset of these negative patterns of thought. You know, all of these things that we don't really have much control over. And it allows us to focus even just for a couple of minutes on the things that we need to be paying attention to right now. Three to five sentences. It just begins with, I am grateful for this. We can't break. You are needed. Your leadership is needed. But in order for you to lead, in order for you to be able to pour in somebody else's cup, there's got to be something in the tank for you there already. And so if we are not taking care of ourselves, the potential for us to get caught in the previous image of the tornado or coronavirus or whatever it is, you know, that you are dealing with, it's enhanced. And when that is enhanced, it can be a horribly, horribly difficult cycle to break.
Once again, we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. I know that you all have a lot of things going on, um, personal things, professional things. You're in the midst of some professional development as well. But we just wanted to express our gratitude for you spending a little bit of time with us. And as I said at the beginning of this presentation, here's all of our contact information. And if there's anything ever that we can do to help you all, then please feel free to reach out and we will do everything that we can to assist.
Thank you all for hanging in there and listening to the video. There's a lot of really great nuggets of information in there. We want you to have a chance to process some of the conversation about leadership and your struggles. And so we are going to put you into breakout rooms just to have an opportunity to network a little bit. When you go into these rooms with the three or four of your closest friends, or they will be by the end of that conversation, we're going to put some questions related to these four areas of the don't panic, don't assume, don't micro and don't break and give you some uh prompts to talk to each other about, maybe get some ideas from each other about how to respond in each of those areas. So when you go into the breakout room, please pull up your chat function, which you can find the button if you scroll down to the bottom and you'll see a chat. Um, button will drop those questions in there. We're going to let you go for about um 12, 13, 14 minutes um and then come back. And then we're going to do just a close out and a call to action. So now's your time. We're going to send you to the breakout rooms along with the questions and uh good luck with your discussions.
Okay, Paula, I have sent them to the breakout rooms. They are supposed to be going.
I have a conversation, I have a request to go to a breakout room.
Okay, you can just ignore.
Okay, I will.
Um, and so I'm going to broadcast a message to all.
Morgan, they can, the people who have not gone to the rooms can still hear us.
Excellent. Jeremy, you asked for some help?
Well, I was looking in the chat and I didn't see the question, but a blue box appeared with a question and then it disappeared. How do we get that back?
Well, that's a great question, but let me drop it in here for you. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morgan, we have four that have not joined a breakout room that we lost some in between the breakouts and coming back. So thank you all for coming back. And thank you all for experimenting in something new in the virtual conference world. I just wanted to close out by giving you some rate, some follow-up and some summary of what we heard during the presentation. And that is those four areas of focus about what not to do related to our leadership. And, and that initial was don't panic, right? Creating that safe and secure environment and acknowledging that the elephant in the room is there and it's scary. Um, and this idea of calling out fear and then projecting calm and openness, one of those really hard skills to do, especially when crisis occurs. And so as we lead through that, right, how do we know to look ahead, not just behind, and change our leadership and turn it into a safe environment for our teams? The other thing about don't assume is that everyone's on the same page and that information creates informedness, which I love that quote um from, from the presenters because our job is really to reduce ambiguity and give information regularly and promptly and that we're clear and that we put ourselves in other shoes about what they understand. And so I know that I've had to reflect about how I have been responsive to others and how I've coached them during this timeframe uh to make them feel connected because we are all still working remotely. And that idea of not micro, don't micro, or, or just be nearsighted, thinking about what's moving forward, really um not paying attention to the technical tasks and decisions that we have to make as leaders, but also how are we changing things? How are we communicating? How are we delegating? But more importantly, I love that challenge of keeping one eye on the future and starting to embrace the idea that we are not going to go back doing the same exact things that we've always done and it's going to look different. And how is it going to look different? And what are those things that we're going to experience again? Uh, the same way that we did and what are we going to experience in a different way? And then of course that don't break, I think that heavy lifting that we've been doing is uh putting ourselves aside and not taking care of ourselves in the best way. And, and that whole challenging ourselves to cut down on our screen time, which is true because somebody asked me recently, what have you been doing new uh during this time? And I said, oh, I've been binge watching Netflix, right? Um, not realizing that that is um uh, not necessarily the best break uh for me. So the, the challenge that I want to throw back out to you are those ideas that they talked about towards the end of the presentation. And that was, how can we shift our focus? How can we write down what we're thinking and feeling, that brain dump exercise? That helps us list all of the things that we can and can't control so that we can more uh focus our efforts on those things that we can and we can start shifting our mindset. And the idea that uh we take a couple of minutes every day to write down those things that we're grateful for or those things that we can or cannot do, because that is really that visual uh opportunity for us to say, I need to get out of this negative mindset and I need to refocus on what we should be paying attention to, what I should be paying attention to. And I just don't think we take enough time. At least I know that I don't always do that. Uh, I do have a gratitude journal. Uh, and sometimes I'll pick it up and it's been a week, but I feel better when I do that. So I guess the call to action is, is you know, all those things that we shouldn't be doing in leadership and because we don't know how long we will continue to be in this state where we are now, it could be prolonged for a longer period of time. Some of us are back at work in the office with our coworkers, but it's different. And some of us are still working from home and it's very different. So wherever you are um in your professional life and in your personal life, I wish you all nothing but the best. I know that leadership during these times is a little bit more difficult. It takes a lot more heavy lifting. We're so glad that you've taken the time to sit and be with us at Kansas G F Y during our virtual conference. We know that you have a thousand other things you could be doing. So we appreciate that you're willing to um come back and uh engage in your own professional development and continue to learn nuggets of information that hopefully will make you and your organization better. So Rebecca, I'll turn it back over to you um and to uh, we hope that you all, we will see you tomorrow. We do have another session tomorrow related to uh climate and risk resilience with Lindsay Ross. That session brought to us by uh in cooperation and partnership with Moody's. And so we were looking forward to having that session at 11:00. Um, and we hope that you're able to join us. So Rebecca.
Thank you, Paula. Um, once again, we do want to thank our session sponsor, R S M, um and encourage um all of you, um as you have the time to go out to the conference website. Look at their company profile, look at what they have on their um their boards in regards to information and things like that, that may be, may be beneficial to you as well. So I just wanted to give one more um thank you to them for uh being a sponsor for this session.
Thank you all and we hope to see you tomorrow.